Thirty-two.
In order the Board of Commissioners, City of Newport, Kentucky, appointing Dylan Carson to the position of Labor Maintenance in the Community Service Department effective April twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
Welcome, Ray.
This fine young gentleman next to me is Mr. Dylan Carson. I got a few notes on Dylan. He, uh, he's a family man. He's in attendance when he tonight is his wife Sarah and his young man Dylan Junior. He is awake. Maybe not for long. Uh, during the interview process, Dylan stuck out with his experience and knowledge on the community services side of the parceration stuff, parcel recreation stuff that we do, the daily functions and that. Dylan, uh, has experience with some concrete. He's proficient in concrete, which we're looking for, uh, tree removals, snow removal in all our parcel recreation areas. And, uh, Dylan was a Newport resident when he was smaller because I was under residence now. So also Dylan had to CDL permit, post-licensing, has finished all his road scholar and road master certifications. What that is, it's some, it's some classwork that we do, it's like nineteen courses that we go through the UK technology center. So he's, he's finished that already. And, uh, with that, I think Dylan will be a welcome addition to our staff and I'm open for any questions.
Thank you, Ray. On the board?
Sounds like wonderful qualifications. It's great.
From the public? I just want to add, that's a pretty mighty full toolbox. So keep adding those skills and we look forward to you being here for a lot of years. So, uh, with that, please call the roll.
Commissioner Redwansky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Smith Morrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Rechtin?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Sutherland?
Yes.
Mayor Caddully?
Yes.
Welcome to the board.
Welcome. We're gonna take a quick five-minute break just to allow them, their fine family, to get some photos and then we'll reconvene in five minutes.
Want us to move our stuff?
That was a short one. Mics back on. Copy. Tiffany, can you call us in, please?
Commissioner Redwansky?
Here.
Vice Mayor Smith Morrow?
Here.
Commissioner Rechtin?
Here.
Commissioner Sutherland?
Here.
Mayor Caddully?
Here. This evening, we have a couple proclamations and a presentation. We will start off with the first proclamation in honor of Fair Housing Month. Whereas the Fair Housing Act enacted on April eleventh, nineteen sixty-eight, enshrined into federal law, the goal of eliminating racial segregation and ending housing discrimination in the United States. And whereas the Fair Housing Act prohibits discrimination in housing based on race, color, religion, sex, familial status, national origin, and disability, and commits recipients of federal funding to affirmatively further fair housing in their communities. And whereas the City of Newport is committed to the mission and intent of Congress to provide fair and equal housing opportunities for all. Whereas our social fabric and the economy, health, and environment are strengthened in diverse, inclusive communities. And whereas more than fifty years after the passage of the Fair Housing Act, discrimination persists and many communities remain segregated. And whereas acts of housing discriminations and barriers to equal housing opportunities are repugnant to common sense of decency and fairness. Now therefore I, Thomas Caddully Junior, the mayor of the City of Newport, on behalf of its citizens, do proclaim the month of April as Fair Housing Month in the City of Newport and express the hope that this year's observance will promote fair housing practices throughout the city. Let's clap for fair. We have another proclamation this evening, and this is the Frontline Worker Appreciation Proclamation. Whereas frontline workers are builders of our communities, exercising curiosity, compassion, courage, and creativity to provide essential services that ensure safety and health and education of our residents. And whereas over nine million healthcare workers across the United States serve in hospitals, clinics, and long-term facilities, often placing themselves at risk to provide life-saving care. And whereas firefighters respond to an estimated thirty-nine million emergency calls each year, over eight hundred thousand sworn law enforcement officers nationwide work tirelessly to uphold the law and ensure public safety. And, Emergical Medical Services Personnel respond to more than two hundred and forty million calls annually. And whereas teachers dedicate their career to shaping the future of our communities with over three point seven million educators in the United States providing knowledge and guidance to our youth. And whereas frontline workers embody the sense, essence of builders, flexible thinkers, and constructive problem solvers who respect the dignity of all people by dedicating themselves to overcoming challenges and uniting communities. Now therefore I, Thomas L. Caddully Junior, Mayor of City of Newport, do proclaim the month of May as Frontline Worker Appreciation Month and encourage all residents to join in recognizing and honoring the heroic contributions of our healthcare workers, firefighters, law enforcement officers, EMS personnel, and teachers. This week has been full of proclamations. We also celebrated Arbor Day, and I'm not gonna read that one because we did that on site at the event. The next item on our agenda is a presentation, and it's a discussion to hear proposed changes to the bar ID requirements and extended hours, license, ordinance in the City of Newport.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Commissioners, um, is one of the things that we have spent a lot of time on is looking at, uh, our ordinances, uh, trying to modernize where we can, address some concerns. So I've spent a lot of time, um, in the assistant role with, uh, Dan and Paul Kunkel working on issues related to alcohol and alcohol enforcement. And we've made some changes over the years, uh, to some of those and others that we've looked at and wanted to maybe tweak to do some things better. So the first one I'll tackle is the bar ID. So at one time, it's probably going back at least to the nineteen seventies, the city is required that anyone that serve alcohol in an establishment have a identification card. They would come down to the city, um, fill out their application, they go through some, uh, paperwork, and then when they come back, they would be given a, a card. Right now, the cost of it's forty-five dollars. The purpose of the card, and, um, I think this was part of the reason in antiquity, but, but the purpose that it serves today essentially is to allow the police and the ABC administration to know who's in the bar and if they're supposed to be there at a given time. So the, the best example I can give of that is, uh, officer stops in after closing time is, is ended, there should be nobody in the bar after close except bar employees shutting down, doing things like that. There should be no alcohol out, things like that. The issue is, if there's no way to identify that you belong here, then you, they're always the same story. Oh, he works there, he's helping out, he's a janitor, whatever that is. That's one of the concerns. Now, one of the complaints that I have heard traditionally over time from bar owners is it's forty-five dollars and in a vacuum, that's not a lot of money. But when you're having a, a struggle keeping bartenders and you front that money for them, you know, it could be several hundred dollars in a year that you spend on IDs for employees that don't end up working out. And that's, that was one complaint that we had with the owner says, I don't mind paying the forty-five dollars, but I do mind when I can't keep a bartender for more than two weeks and they come back and now I'm doing this over and over again. On the side for the city, it doesn't provide a whole lot of benefit. It's, we charge forty-five dollars, uh, there's quite a bit of staff time and the actual card, taking the photo, uh, it's two appointments you have to make in the building, once with the initial, and then once when you come back. So what we looked at to try to change this up to, uh, I think, address the concerns that we have and to also find a way to do this better and more efficiently. So what I would propose to you is that we eliminate the bar ID, however, uh, in its place, that every bar will be required to send an updated roster to the ABC officer as they make changes, and then send a roster with their quarterly alcohol regulatory fee return. So that way, if an officer comes in, we should have an up, the most updated list. That doesn't require a whole lot of effort on anybody's part and it's easy record-keeping for us. The other piece to this that I think is where the, the real benefit to the city comes and also to the, arguably to the bar owner, is that as opposed to requiring the bar ID, we would require that all of us, anyone touching alcohol would go through what's called STAR training. STAR training is, uh, something you go through, a lot of bars will do this already as a matter of course, your liquor liability carry would prefer that you do it. So if all of your employees complete STAR training, a lot of insurance carriers will give you a benefit on your, your insurance cost. So there should be a savings here. The cost of the STAR training is forty dollars per employee, so it's already cheaper than getting the bar ID. The bar, the STAR training is gonna talk about over-serving, uh, how to deal with other issues that come along legally that you might have as a bartender. So those are things that I don't know they're getting addressed in the training or not. I'm sure in a lot of bars it is, and some probably not as much. So this would create an educational piece that I think is a benefit to us, and it also, uh, still continues to accomplish the thing, the same goal as far as making sure that we know who the folks in the bars are all the time. So that's what I would propose. I don't have any specific legislation in front of you for that. I wanted to have the conversation with you guys. There's been some misconstrued ideas about bar IDs. For example, and one of those is that when they come and get a bar ID, that they're getting a background check, and that's not really truthful. Um, they, we, they do basically a de minimis background check in that we run for Kentucky state offenses, but living in a, in a city that's so central to Indiana and Ohio, realistically, this is only catching some. So I don't, there's not really a background check that's involved in this to begin with. So I don't know there's a lot of other benefits that exist for us as a group. So, um, happy to, and I have, uh, Captain Kunkel and Diane Ramey, who's our ABC officer here, um, I'm happy to answer any questions about that, um, and they can fill in as well.
On the board?
Yeah, um, so, did I, did I hear you say that insurance may pay for the employees to get that training?
Insurance will not pay for it, but, um...
The lower premium.
They will usually give you a benefit for your premium if everyone, your employees have taken it.
And then what, what I think I also heard you say is that what you're proposing is that they would provide a quarterly roster?
They would need to provide a roster as changes happen so they...
As changes happen, okay.
So they could email that to Diane. But they would need to put the physical copy with their returns every, every quarter. So that way, we know that we're making that contact.
I see, okay. Thank you.
John, they can just send it via email, right? They don't have to pay the postage or anything like that?
Absolutely, correct.
Robbie? Or chief, but I didn't want to confuse the chiefs.
Robbie, I'm part of the Department of Newport. Since I was on the Police Department in the seventies, when we were doing these checks, uh, there's one thing that's, uh, not covered. I didn't even know this was going on. They tried to keep some of this as private clubs and get these bar IDs just so they could party on their own in the evenings. And that's what went on back then in the seventies. I was there, I witnessed it. So I just think you need to think about that, what you're doing, and about giving them a private club licenses, uh, that's why this was kind of considered back then.
Gotcha.
I was here.
Yeah, there are various requirements as it relates to private clubs, and they get, they go through ABC and all of that, so, um, I'm not certain, I would have that conversation, if there is something that we would need to add to the legislation that would, would deal with that or not. Certainly, there's an ability, and there's a license through the state for, uh, private clubs as it relates to alcohol and so forth, but we could take a look at that and make sure that we're addressing, uh, what those concerns are and hit that.
Diane, can, uh, she's here, right? Perhaps she can shed some light on it, maybe?
On the private clubs?
Yeah.
Well, the private clubs here, again, will take like the BMW or something like that. If there's members only that go in there, if there's a problem, please go. Private clubs still require, they're still have a bar ID, they can still do STAR training as well. And we will treat them, we know we pay that price.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean that they were making it private club, they were having their private parties like it was a private club, just an, an excuse to hang out in the bars after hours so everybody could get an ID. It was kind of like a private club without really legally being one. That's what I was trying to get at.
So, so the...
They didn't really work there, they were just getting updated.
Right. They, they would just come in, and maybe they would work there for a little bit, but they was using it more just so they could party after hours.
So that, that was... And, and, and Robbie, I think that's one of the conversations that we've had many times as we've gone through this process and discussed those IDs. But I think the difference is that this registry would essentially be the same thing other than actually going physically to get a card. They'd have to be on the registry. Now, the question is, how do we regulate that and how do we do so in a regular way? I guess if we went there and they didn't have their ID, that would be our regulation mechanism. If we go there and their name's not on the list, that's the regulation, that, that would be the regulatory mechanism. Is that, is that right? Is that the understanding?
That's correct. They're still gonna need to be registered. So if you come into the bar, for example, after hours and someone not on the list, that's gonna be a problem for the bar. If they're drinking after close regardless, licensed or otherwise, they're gonna get cited for that because legally you can't drink in the bar after close, whether you work for the bar or not. And those are things that our Police Department, I know Diane works on, to crack down because we'll, we'll get those complaints from time to time.
Anyone else on the board?
Yeah, I have a few questions. Talk to me a little bit about what that ID looks like. Is that a, is that a photo ID that we have?
Is it photo ID?
It's similar, and we use the same camera system for the passports, and that's why we do it?
Uh, we don't do passport photos here, but, uh, it's like the pool pass, it's all that kind of stuff, the employee IDs, all that kind of thing, it's all a little plastic card.
Are they numbered then, sequentially numbered or anything? Do you know?
Um, I don't know the answer to that. Kim, do you?
They're not? Okay.
They do have like their last four socials on it, their full name on it.
Okay.
Just information regarding that person's actual ID.
Okay.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm gonna ask anyone that's going to be participating if we can come to the mic, just because those at home can't hear the conversation. So, Kim, can you come up and please repeat that? And I know you know it well.
Yes. Unfortunately, I did it for many years. There is no specific number for them. What it is, is the last four of their social is on the ID.
Okay.
And then their name, um, personal information about them, the height, the weight, the date of birth, different things, they're actually on ID.
And, Kim, while you're here, is it specific to that establishment?
Yes, it has to be that establishment, but they can work at multiple, because on the back of the card, you can add them, because they're ten dollars to add each bar.
Okay, so we could work at two different bars?
We can work at four bars.
Okay, all right.
And there's an expiration date on those, right?
Correct, now there is, every two years they expire.
And so you have to renew every forty-five dollars every two years?
At thirty-five every two years.
Thirty-five every two years, so...
The, um, the, the other question I have...
Thank you, Kim.
Maybe for Lenny. All of the bar employees are, are ten ninety-nine employees, is that correct? Do you, do we know every employee or are they W-two's or what are they? You know? Because what I'm saying here is, you, you know, if they report quarterly, you know, they may be just reporting, uh, the W-two's and not to ten ninety-nines, and they may also have ten ninety-nines. Is that a possibility here?
Well, sure, some bars...
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, some bars are gonna, depending on how they do their business, like, you know, BW-three's, for example, I'm sure they full W-two employees, uh, you might, with some smaller bars, you might find they try to skirt it. It doesn't change as far as what our side of it is because you still need to be on the list, whether, and, and we sometimes get in the weeds, we have these debates of it, how far down the chain that we'd be in a bar employee you need to be, but in my opinion, if anybody that's gonna be in the bar after hours, whether I'm a janitor, the security guard, a bartender itself, those people all need to have, they need to be on the list, regardless of what, you can't skirt it by saying, well, I'm not really an employee, is the, is the point, maybe answer the question better.
Lenny, do you know, are the majority of the establishments...
I, I would, I would say the majority are W-two employees, when the quarterly payroll is turned in.
Okay.
Generally a listing, like a payroll listing, um, has the employees, uh...
Okay.
Listed out. And I think very few ten ninety-nine, but...
Could we, and...
It's a violation for not having an occupational license.
Could we have, um, you know, in order to make this decision in a proper fashion, could we have the revenues generated from the photo IDs, the costs associated with them, as well as, could we have the numbers? You know, just numbers, these are, these are three employees at this establishment and ten ninety-nines, you know, so we know? Is that, is that possible?
Yeah, we do track some of that. Part of that fee is, uh, we keep a list, so we take in, Kim, was it twenty dollars, twenty-five? Part of that money we collect is, is turned, it's turned around and it's, uh, it's our credit card, it's a paid, it's paid back in a fee for the, the smaller background check.
The twenty, what it is, forty-five dollars, how you break it down, is the twenty-five actually is for their background check, because that's what we have to pay for a background check. And then the other twenty was just for the card. And then when I said thirty-five, it's because they already had a card, they get a ten dollar discount. So if it's a thirty-five, you've already had an ID.
So do you do, redo?
We still do a background check every time.
You do, you do a background, okay.
It's still, it's twenty-five dollars to the state.
So you could give us the gross numbers of what we received annually from those, as well as costs associated with that?
Yes.
And we could do, we could do that by establishment too, right?
I would have that by establishment.
Okay. But you would have them...
I mean, the ballpark, because I track all the background checks, and it's some, sometimes background checks are obtained without getting a license, but we do have a specific revenue line for our IDs.
But could you track, John, the, the number of employees by establishment? Surely we know that, right?
We should have numbers, yeah. I mean, they, they fluctuate, sure. I mean, but, yeah, I give you a pretty good idea of what it was based on last quarter or whenever that would be.
I, I think that would be beneficial and help making the decision whether we, you know, eliminate these or not, you know, whether it makes sense or not. Is, is it cost-effective? And, you know, are we, are we receiving the right compensation? Are the ten ninety-nines coming in or the W-two's coming in? And are we getting the proper, you know, payroll?
I guess the question that I have as well that adds on to Ken's points is, what about, um, what do we think our compliance rate is? Do we know what our compliance rate is?
Well, it's pretty significant. Uh, Captain Kunkel can speak to that because, um, they've gone through, Paul, if you could for a second. So, uh, yeah, um, Paul, if you could, because they do checks routinely on this. And how frequently do you find bars are not in compliance?
We work with everybody in the City of Newport. We come in, we, we came out of COVID, and when we came out of COVID, I can tell you this much, everybody needed to have conversations, get back on track to doing what we normally do. Once we got everybody on track, it's easy to track what citations have we written, because if you weren't in compliance, you got a citation. And I can tell you, over the last three years, I don't know many citations. So I think, I would, I would estimate, uh, we have a very high percentage of people participating in our program.
And it seemed like, Captain, when we started really getting, I'd say about, what he said about post-COVID, we really started cracking down on all the alcohol rules, being concerned and making sure people were following. And I think the very first time that him and Barry Shields went out, there was maybe two or three places where there was an employee, uh, at, at one of those events that didn't have one. But as they started doing it and going to maybe, and I won't say it's always quarterly, but several times a year, the more that they did it and the board, the bars got to move, like, yep, we gotta do this, and if you don't, we're gonna get shut down, we started seeing almost no problems there. I don't think they found anybody.
We had some bars that were new to our city after COVID, hadn't done this before, and they hadn't, they were bringing the police from Ohio to Kentucky. So we had to explain to them, and sure, we went in and we worked with them till we got on track. Did we have some difficulties? Yes, because they had managers that were changing regularly, because they were bigger, the bigger, uh, what do you wanna call them, franchise bars? You wanna call that? And when we had new businesses open up, uh, not a lot of cities do this with the IDs. Matter of fact, is it three in Kentucky?
Two or three, yeah.
It's two or three, uh, cities in Kentucky actually do bar IDs. And don't ask me to move them, I can't, I don't know that this time.
So to be clear, this is, this is not the norm, we are the anomaly with the two other cities, essentially.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
And so, yeah.
It's, it's, we've, we've been doing it so long, it's almost becomes a habit, if you want to say that. This is, this is gonna be a change that even the officers are gonna have to get used to. But the only difference between a bar ID and a roster is we're probably gonna get the bars to, when they have new employees, they're gonna be on that roster, whereas when we had new, like, new employees, they didn't wanna pay the forty-five dollars because, man, I'm gonna train this guy for two weeks and they're not gonna work out, and the next two weeks before it's over, we're not gonna a month, and I've already spent eighty to a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty-some dollars because I went through three and four. So I guarantee you, they, they'll, they'll be, matter of fact, uh, there, I think, one of our others that's in here, and I know that it's very simple for him to send an email to our, to me and to Diane back there, and bam, we know, that day, forward it to me. I do a bar check, they're on the roster, we're done.
I can tell you, it seems like a lifetime ago that I worked in the service industry during college and, and I worked in bars. Even, um, this is in Michigan, so this is a little bit different. Some things I do wanna share with the board and the public is that STAR program, that was even offered then, so this is not something that's a fly-by-night operation, it's very well-established. The other thing I wanna comment on is that, you know, we're in this post-COVID era right now, and we hear about workforce shortages and how difficult it is to find reliable workers, how difficult it is to get people that wanna show up every day and that wanna work, but particularly in certain professions, um, this being one of them, where, you know, the pay, um, you know, I remember when I worked in, you know, back then, that you'd have a server, they might get a little bit better deal going to work in a different restaurant, and they'd be gone. They wouldn't even, no call, no show, and you'd hear about it through the grapevine, and they would be gone. And we, you know, when we talked about, about income-aligned housing not too long ago, in the housing study, and we talked about the missing middle, we're talking about people that are our workforce in our country. And what we're doing right now is we're putting the burden on them to simply have to pay a little bit more money and take it out of them being able to provide for their families. So I'm very happy to see us revisit this topic. I think that we need to be, um, for, we, 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 we should be pursuing a program that is fair to the workforce, that doesn't involve a lot of staff time going through and taking pictures and making cards, and, and if nobody else is doing it, why are we? You know, I think we really have to take an approach where historically, we've always been kind of timid about Mama's Street, we've been timid about the businesses... You know, I think we really have to take an approach where historically, we've always been kind of timid about Mama's Street, we've been timid about the businesses that we have in our city, and we have to start taking a progressive step forward, thank you.
Following up a little bit, do you two talk, do you, yours, your bar ID Excel spreadsheet is shared with Lenny, and Lenny verifies that those are employees paying our two and a half percent? Yes, no, tell me yes.
So Lenny wouldn't, I don't think that would be, I don't know that that totally lines up, because I don't know that Lenny gets a list of every single person that employs in a bar, and so I don't, I don't know that that's something we've looked at.
That's one, number, I, I think that correlating these two would be a good idea, so if we're gonna go to a system with an Excel spreadsheet and a roster, then we should be sure that we're getting either a, a payment from a ten ninety-nine or a W-two, that's number one. Number two, how do we verify that the STAR training's been done? That's a state of Kentucky system, right?
You get a certificate, not to interrupt, so.
Go ahead.
You get a certificate when they attend the STAR program, I'll tell you, because I've taken it.
Okay, did you pass?
I passed.
Okay, good.
Ten years, it was a long, 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 long time ago, but with the STAR program, you get a certificate, and they can take it back to the bar, and it could be on file there.
Okay.
Now, um, it's got the time and date of class if we're offered, it's real easy to.
Okay.
Find out if it's legit or not.
Alright.
They could probably also email a copy of that to the, to the ABC administrator as well.
That's what they would do, is forward it as they get done, and then she'd mark that off her, her roster, that they've got it.
And just for clarity, we would be moving to a mandatory, bar, all bartenders must be STAR trained to be eligible to serve.
Correct.
Which is a major change.
Well, so, so they wouldn't be, so you, you paid forty-five dollars to get a, a bar ID, and then you paid thirty-five dollars two years later, and then you paid thirty-five dollars two years later, and now we're gonna make them do another training that costs more money?
I think the training costs more money, the training costs less, I don't know how frequently you've gotta keep up with that.
The one and done, or at least it was back then.
I'll, I'll tell you this, um, I, I have a bar ID in this city.
Three, thank you, Kim.
What is it?
Thank you.
I can't hear.
Three, three, three years, what you said.
Three-year program, it expires every three years, so it doesn't cost them another forty bucks to go in and get it, they have to go in and get it recertified, I'm not sure what it costs, it's maybe twenty, twenty-five bucks, but it's a three-year, it still works, and, you know, it's still, we can still use it as though we have a STAR training certificate on hand here and at the bars, if these guys wanna go in, they can still ask for those as well, too. They still have to show, just like you do a bar ID, do you ask for their ID personally, to make sure they are who they say they are?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
And, and the other thing is, everybody that works in a bar has a state ID, so when we have somebody on a roster and we're not sure who they are, we have computers in our cars, we're able to check this stuff, we, the bar IDs are, I would say, to, in my viewpoint, are antiquated, when we have so much technology around us, to prove what they say.
Is the requirement going to be that if you're a janitor, that you still have to get the STAR certification, because?
I wouldn't.
Okay, I, I appreciate that, because these are very different roles, roles that you have, exactly, yeah, yeah.
Behind the bar.
That's a skill set.
Exactly, exactly.
So I, I just wanna say, uh, you know, I've represented bars and restaurants in my legal career, and before I became a lawyer, I waited tables and I bartended in four different cities in two different states, and this is the only city I ever came to where I had to pay to become, to get a job, and that's, to me, it's unacceptable, and it's unacceptable for these business owners who were trying to attract our city, um, to put this extra, uh, fee on their employees and on the, the bar owners themselves, because some, some bar owners or restaurant owners will pay for this on behalf of employees, some employees are stuck paying for it themselves. So, you know, to Mr. Radwansky's point, um, you know, this is just, it's a lot on the, these folks that are just trying to make a living. The other thing that I would say is, you know, to just shift this from, you have to have a bar ID to now you have to do a training, I still think it's a significant, um, uh, significant ask on behalf of these businesses, to do it one time for one employee, I, I could see that, but to have to recertify every two or three years, it's, it's basically the same thing as a bar ID at the end of the day, so. I, I get the need for the training, initial training, but if you've been trained and you've done, and you've bartended, and you know how to bartend, we're gonna make you go back and do this all over again, over and over and over again, to me, that's, I, I, I think that at some point you'd have to cut that off.
Commissioner, I would just say it's not unlike, you know, any number of occupations where you've got certain training requirements that you have to do over time, and, you know, certainly not like us in the legal profession where you've gotta do hours of this every year, but I think putting an ask saying that you need to brush up on your skills and make sure you understand the law and your, your obligations every few years is, is a reasonable ask, and I think it actually has a tangible value, where I think that the, the bar ID, I don't see where the, having that card itself has any tangible use.
I agree.
And I feel like it's also, you know, you change jobs, and a lot of people in that world do, and they may work at, you know, Blaze today, and they may be working, you know, at Barb's East, you know, next week, and then they gotta come back in here again, because they're doing the exact same job in the exact same city, but now they're attending bar down the street, that, that doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
Or to your point, that they might decide that they wanna pick up more shifts and from a different establishment, they would have to come back and deal with that anyway.
So I will touch base on this just for a second, I did do some, a little bit of homework on this and checked with our surrounding cities, so I went to Lexington, to Elizabeth, to Louisville, to Bellevue, to Dayton, Alexandria, and Covington. I have called all of these places, talked to the ABC administrator there, I can tell you, there's a variety of things that happen throughout the neighboring cities, Lexington itself has their own, which they're a bigger city than us, so they have a lot more resource that they can do down there, to Elizabeth Town, they don't have anything going on, we go to Louisville, Louisville there again, has its own that they do, again, Bellevue, they don't do anything, Dayton doesn't require anything, Alexandria, Covington. Let's go to our next door neighbor here, so Covington itself, they only use the STAR training if they have had an establishment that has three or more halls per year, that's when they require them to come in and do some STAR training, other than that, nobody's doing bar IDs, STAR training, you know, I think it's a very educational piece, it kinda teaches a lot of things of over-intoxication, there again, doesn't mean that everybody needs to do it right, um, but, um, I, personally, I just think, use the roster, if we need to go in, we still have the roster of all employees coming and going, um, if we do have an establishment that's, you know, a problem, then maybe we should relook at it, and maybe really relook at it more.
No, that's, that's very helpful, Dan.
This ask was assigned, I made several roundtable conversations with Diane, Bob Rambler, whoever else, we've gone through several different criteria that we wanted to change, and the things that they brought up tonight is what we thought was the best method that this boards adopt in, uh, exchange for the bar IDs. Uh, but a couple of things, I mean, reiterate what they said and add to it a little bit, the STAR training, the way that I drafted the ordinance, and they didn't realize you didn't have a copy yet to look at, would require them to, to, uh, complete it within ninety days of appointment, so that way we escape these people that come in and work for a week or two and they're gone. It'd be more serious employees, and if they pay the forty-five dollars, whatever it is for STAR training, it's good for three years, not a whole lot different than getting the bar ID, and as Ms. Ramey just said, after the three years expires, you just get recertified, and it's a lesser cost, so I don't think there's a burden that comes with that, any worse than what we have with the bar ID now. Furthermore, uh, in our conversations and our roundtables and the research that Diane's done, we are one of the only cities that still has a bar ID, so we need to replace it with something, we thought the roster mechanism was the best, Captain Kongo, being a police officer doing the bar checks, thought this was also a, uh, a, a, the way to go. STAR training seems to be the more logical and the more used approach taken by the other cities that we did. So we're keeping within the norm as far as that goes, um, so.
Diane, just for the edification of the public, can you expound upon, um, how elaborate STAR training is, what the commitment would be for the employee?
I took the STAR training program, it's early in terms of I was going to take the STAR training to become a bartender, I wouldn't wanna do it, because the liability issues falls within it, right? There again, I think as John and we all mentioned, it's a very educational class, uh, or a program that you have to take, the state, there again, you get a little bit, you know, your insurance rates go down with the STAR training, most of all of our, um, uh, like, spectrum catering, all of these guys make the STAR training program, they have all of their employees there, because of insurance purposes, I mean, their insurance premiums do drop or decrease, I can't tell you what the percentage is on that.
Diane, can you speak specifically, what is the training? Is it a video, or is it an in-person, are you able to do it at your time at home?
If you can, absolutely, if you don't have time to finish it today, it's a, you know, it's a state program, on the website, take the program, you can take two days to do it if you choose to, it's about a four-hour class.
So you watch it.
Does not sound onerous at all, actually, it sounds very.
I was gonna be for the access thing, yeah.
You know, and you, it goes through that whole thing, and if you miss it, then it comes back and tells you the answer, at the end of it, you're gonna take a flight, you're gonna take a test.
Sounds reasonable. I also, um, would add that I, I, I think the, um, recertification every three years, um, definitely makes sense, and I wouldn't think it would be a problem to, um, ask the employees in that industry to, uh, to, to re-up on the, on the STAR training at that time as well. We're trying to have high standards here in Newport and keep the community safe, and to provide all the tools we can for our law enforcement officers as they're out and about, I think the more we can do to have these employees trained, it helps keep them safe, it helps keep the establishment owners safe as well as the public. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question? Um, on my bar ID, on the back of it, it says stage name, are exotic dancers required to have these IDs?
They do, in this state, your, adult entertainment is exempt from any of these, so if you're gonna have exotic dancers coming in, I think we still need to keep them on the same page that we've been on.
So this would, so the STAR training would go beyond just bartenders?
Yes.
It could be, would it be waiters too, if waiters are serving beer?
I don't see the need for the waiters to be doing this, because if I'm serving alcohol behind the bar, and I've got somebody walking up, picking up, taking it to the table, do they really need to have the STAR trading program? That's how I look at it, I, I don't, I just.
The ordinance indicates right now that we have everybody have a bar ID, including, uh, people that do maintenance, people that do security.
Dishwashers.
And that's not, um, feasible, I think, here, but the way it's drafted, the way I drafted it based on our conversations, was we only wanted it to be required for bartenders or servers whose primary function is to serve alcohol.
But that's speaking of the STAR training, that's not speaking of the overall registry, these are different issues.
There's two things, so you're looking at STAR training plus you're looking at a roster being turned in every quarter.
Yeah.
Want to reiterate, what you, uh, you guys asked was that the, uh, proof of STAR training has to be kept with the roster on premise, so we polished, mugged, and checked, we know it's there, and second of all, uh, there's a provision that the, um, bar ID does not, um, evaporate or whatever, if, if you're adult entertainment, adult entertainment.
Entertainers go from city to city, and you wanna know who's in our city, and where they came from, and where they're going.
Comment I'll, I'll throw in there, in that when I did this during college, I never had the lifelong ambition of being a, um, doing work in the food service industry and bars, but for people that have, and I can think of some folks throughout the city that have worked in this profession for north of twenty years, do we, if, if they're a professional who has set amount of years of experience, do we really need to have them keep going through, uh, recertification every three years, is that really value-added?
You're, you're starting, if, if you start having carve-outs like that, Commissioner, I think that what happens is, you're putting a whole lot of work on stay-af to figure out and make determinations that, you know, doesn't, don't make any sense, I mean, it would be a lot of stay-af time to try to figure that out and justify, and what you might think is, you know, you don't need it, may not be what somebody else thinks, so I, I think you get into a, a question of what's sub, you know, we wanna make it as, uh, less subjective, you know, we want it to be clear.
I'd, I'd like to see uniform high standards, Julie, um, and I, I think that, uh, for business owners that wanna come into Newport, they, they need to know that we have high standards to keep the community safe.
Can I follow up a little bit on what Julie said before, and I like that idea of high standards, number one, number two is, this isn't too much different than SafeServe, which is a.
That's right.
A uniform system of making sure that the people, my wife has been through it, that people washing dishes and keeping our food safe when it's served to us are held to a high standard, you know, that, there's not too much difference in that, and I would agree with Dan, you know, anybody that carries alcohol out has to know when your eyes are glazed over and when you're not suitable to serve, I mean, so anybody carrying any alcohol and giving it to somebody, and I don't wanna say just behind the bar, but if you carry alcohol away from the bar to somebody, the visibility and making sure that that person is capable of having another drink and driving home or whatever is important.
I don't think a four-hour training is necessary to tell whether someone's intoxicated or not, but, you know, I, I do agree that we need some training.
Well, you know, you could say it's, you know, when a dish is clean, it's clean, but there's a, there's a legality here in making sure that people are, are safe, you know, and not serve botulism, that they get good, clean food is important, and I think the same thing applies to alcohol, and even more so, you know, eating a bad meal doesn't mean I'm gonna kill somebody on the highway, getting that extra drink may be that thing, so I'm, I'm in favor of what Dan said, including the, the waiters and waitresses, and I don't mind, I don't mind the roster either, John. I think this is a, this is an added benefit to this roster, you know, we can check to see if those ten ninety-nines are sending in their annual quarterly payments to us, we can check to make sure that the people are on your roster that are paying their payroll taxes, so I think there's some real financial benefits to us as well. The other thing is, I wanna ask, what is, what are bartenders paid? Are they at the same service level of the two seventy-five or something like that, are they still there? Two dollars and seventy-five cents plus tips, or?
Correct.
Are they? Oh my gosh, oh. Minimum living wage, damn, that's all I'm gonna say.
I don't know if this helps, but I've never had anybody complain all the years I've been around bars about STAR training, but I've had them complain about bar IDs.
Sure.
I hear it a lot, you know.
Yeah, sure.
I think we all hear it a lot, you know, I have a bar ID as well, because we needed one to actually be able to serve at our neighborhood meetings, and someone was injured, and I had to emergently come and get one to actually carry that out, to remain lawful, and, uh, people were frustrated, and I think that a lot of these bars look at it as a nuisance, and, and to actually do it. The thing I do like about the STAR training is it's online, it's at your own time, and all the things that are good about that, the idea of creating our own, I think is impossible, so.
State website, you can just, there you can take.
And, and I give credit to Louisville and Lexington to be able to build something, but, but we do not have that capacity, and, yes, I think.
Well, yeah, and, and I just wanna, and this might be a good, good question for you, Dan, because when I worked in Michigan, so it's a, a different state, right, if you over-served somebody, you personally were getting the fine.
That's right.
You had to deal with that.
And that can happen.
Right, so I'll tell you, just, just for, for part of your piece of mind, Commissioner Reckton, is that I personally was always very cautious, because you don't want to cross that line, you don't want that on your conscience and have to live through the rest of your life with making a poor decision.
It's a good reason to have this, um.
That's right.
Sure, I, I'm not, not disputing, I just wanna point that out, that with people who work in this industry or doing this, that, um, most, I would say, most of the people that I worked with back in the day, and not all, were very conscientious, and if they had a question, they would ask somebody who was more experienced, or they may have known that patron and were a little bit more experienced with their, um, level of being able to, um, to operate a vehicle or not, so, just for your peace of mind.
I would, one last thing, I'm sorry, Mayor, I keep coming, but, um, the only thing that I would ask is, can you guys research and see if there's a free version of this training out there? I took a, uh, in Ohio, they require, uh, if you wanna operate a boat, you have to have a boat license, in Kentucky, you don't have to, well, in Ohio, you can pay to take this course, and you can kinda just click through it if you pay to do it, but if you do the free version, you have to sit there and wait forty-five seconds for every single slide, and it's, it's a timeout, and then it gives you a test, and then if you don't pass, you have to redo that chapter, that's the free version, so is there a free version of this?
Is there generic out there, maybe, I don't know, state looks at it and says, you know what, I'm gonna put this program out there, anybody can take the STAR training, but we're gonna get paid for it as well, so.
Okay.
But I will check for you that.
The boards had a lot of conversations so far, I'm asking the public if they have any comments or any interest in this topic at this time.
We have a couple out there, so.
Yeah. Welcome.
Hi, welcome, all right, first of all, I would like to say I would love to see these bar IDs going.
What's your name?
Dallas Seagrave.
You don't.
I was Laysland, I'm being a, my mama, um, love to see these things going, the roster's a good way to go, uh, one thing I would ask or consider. One thing I would ask for consideration, the turnover rate with new bartenders is real and way worse than I think most people would even anticipate. So if we have somebody that we hire on and immediately have to spend money and then they're gone in two weeks, that's a problem. You're just turning over. So if we set up a new system, we want to put a new Star Training, some type of a probation period when we have people come on.
Dallas, as I indicated in my
Ninety days.
comment to the board, we established that within the 90 days you must complete it. That way we'll know who's serious about wanting to stay in their positions.
Well, first of all, I missed that, so that's perfect. And 90 days is way more than I would expect. And I would probably fire somebody way before 90 days.
Right.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's not a problem.
Okay.
And just real quick to answer your question, there's not a free Star option, but.
Is there a free training, you know? I mean, is there something similar?
That's, that's a business. It's a straight business. It's one that was set up for a for-profit thing that penetrates into the hospitality industry. And it's a good program and it has a lot of benefits. So nobody that's serious about the job running the bar or anything is really gonna have a problem with that. It's just not that difficult to deal with.
Do you, do you participate in it now or have you in the past? I mean, you operated a couple.
We don't, I've done versions of it in the past. We have employees that have already passed the training. We have some that haven't.
Okay.
You know, so we, a lot of the Star Training stuff we handle ourselves, but I'm very particular about, about what we do and how we handle, especially on over-serving. I don't think that's taken as seriously as it should be by some overs, but it's a real, it's a real problem, right? And I won't give you my lengthy philosophy on that at this point. But it can be taken care of, but the Star's program, it's a good direction to start somebody off on. And unfortunately, there are a lot of bartenders that, you know, they, they're queasy about cutting people off. And the one thing the Star Training lacks is what I call fortitude. So, yeah, it'll tell you, hey, okay, we got somebody, you can identify him as like a green light, yellow light, red light. You know, when you're gonna cut them off and teach communication amongst the staff, how to identify people and stuff. So we're talking in a way and everybody knows what's going on. But they have to have fortitude to say no. And when you say no, you're gonna get cussed at, you're gonna yell at, it can be called in every name in the book. You know, we're gonna serve them water and they're gonna stare at the water and say they're too manly to drink the water and that's beneath them. And it's just outrageous stuff. But you have to have that fortitude. That cannot be taught. But that's the only thing that I would add.
I bet that comes from management, doesn't it?
Good time.
I would think so.
Yeah, and that's, very much, it has to be management-backed on doing that. And you have to believe that your business is not going to fail or succeed based on one extra drink being sold to one over-served patron at the end of the night.
That's right.
You have to believe that.
I talked to my, two of my sons are in Austin and they are general managers of restaurants, different restaurants. And they talk to me a lot about this and that situation on over-serving and the position that the management has to take, that leadership needs to come and the backup to those employees when a difficult situation arises. So I applaud you for taking that position.
Thank you, Dallas. Anyone else? All right, I think we've covered this topic pretty well and I think each of us will be providing feedback to City Manager Hayden. The one thing I do want to communicate is the draft that you put together has not been disseminated to us. So we are not aware of what's in that at this point. So I know that's been worked on with staff.
It was not disseminated intentionally because I wanted to give the board an opportunity to hear these things and ask the questions as opposed to I'm locked into what these types of things say. So it wasn't an oversight that was, that was done because we could come back to you with legislation that reflects the conversation that we had tonight, not the conversation that I think you should have.
That's great. And I just want the public to be in a, there's nothing missing from your package.
That's correct. There is not. There is not.
Let me ask one follow-up, John. Do you feel like you've gotten good feedback so far from ideas here?
I have, I have. I really did. This is good conversation. And I think this is a good way that we can, we can deal with some hard legislation going forward.
Thank you.
I felt like sometimes that, when I was certainly, when I sat on the board, that sometimes you get handed something that you haven't talked about a lot and you feel like, well, I need to vote on this tonight as opposed to we can vote on this next month too or whatever.
That's right. I think it's good to continue these conversations, which takes us to the next portion of this, which is, I'm sorry.
I made one additional comment on that. And for the, for the people out there to know, we've also had individual conversations with you prior to this. Not, not as a group, but, so we've had a heads up on it. We haven't seen the draft. But you're doing a really good job in, in having these, and Brian, in having these conversations with us prior to coming into meeting together. Thank you. Sorry for interrupting.
Absolutely. Yes.
The next question is extended hours. And let me give you a little background on this and what we're proposing and how I think this makes sense. So first of all, to know, we have approximately 108 establishments in the city that serve alcohol. Now, that's not necessarily just bars. That would include, you know, convenience stores, movie theater, any place catering, any place that might have sell alcohol at all has got to be licensed to the state. They've also got to be licensed to the city. Out of that 108, we have 23 alcohol establishments that currently have a license to serve till 2:30 in the morning. So for the board's edification in the public, by state law, we don't, we cannot change the basic times that alcohol is served. We can't take away from that. So the state of Kentucky says it's 6:00 AM to midnight, Monday through Saturday. I think on Sunday, it's like 11:00 midnight. And then for reasons I'm not aware of why, the city of Newport is always traditionally given their license to 1:00 AM at no additional cost. So that's, that's the framework that we're dealing with. You were able to get at one time a license to allow service from 1:00 to 2:30 in the morning. And that's the 23 that we're talking about here that currently have that. Several years ago, a change was made in the ordinances, which no longer allowed for new extended hours permits anywhere except for the RFD District, which is essentially Newport on the levee. So as, as you've heard from the conversation tonight and as the board is aware, we've spent a lot of time here working on alcohol establishments and dealing with problem establishments. And there's not a lot. I mean, of that 23, when I went through the list earlier, I mean, most of these places, I was like, oh, I didn't even realize they serve that late. Because, you know, I would, up until I got this job, reviewed the alcohol run reports every Monday morning religiously and looked at what happened over the weekend. So became very familiar with the names that have a lot of calls and then knowing the ones that are noticeably absent from that. So a significant amount of these places don't have any issues at all. I think the concern from some various people in the community may be, well, if you allow this to go on, this is gonna beget problems. First of all, I would say that we would, if we make the change and allow people to get extended hours, I would think that we probably keep that at the central business district at this point. That's open for discussion, but I think that makes sense. And I think that there are several things here is, one, we need to do a uniform job and be very aggressive as it were in enforcement. So one of the arguments that I hear back and forth over time about this, when you go to a bar, I'm sure Mr. Seagraves may make similar comments, is my bar shouldn't be punished because somebody down the street doesn't know how to operate their business the right way. And I think that's a fair criticism. And I think that what we've got to do is build in some mechanisms with which, that we can enforce stronger. So what I would say is that not just go back to the way that we did 2:30 license. I don't think that's necessarily an effective way to do it. I think that we have to add some layers here to protect the residents while at the same time trying to be fair to bar owners and create a sense of vibrancy. Because there's a difference between being vibrant and being a problem, being loud and being obnoxious to your neighbors. So I would say that what we'd start with would be a, would be a board. What I would propose is five people that would be aboard. And unlike our citizen boards, which are 100% residents, I would propose that we would have one of these board members be a member of the police department, not somebody like Paul, but somebody that's not directly dealing with alcohol every day. A staff member determined by the city manager, two residents, as well as a bar owner. And the reason why I think it's important that we have that balance is individuals that aren't familiar with the bar business or not familiar with law enforcement may not really understand the challenges or the concerns that are coming out there. So I think it's important to hear those points of view. But I think it's also important if somebody at the bar says, well, but typically this happens or this is how we handle things. Or to hear from the police side, this is what we do. So I think that how I would envision this happening is if you applied for your after-hours permit, you would go in front of a citizen board, much like we do here for other boards, and you would present and you would explain to the board, here's my bar, the location, and I want to sell till 2:30. And then the board is free to ask questions and determine, and then place as needed, conditions or restrictions. So let's assume that we had a, for the sake of argument, we had a bar owner that maybe owned a place somewhere else previously and had some issues. And you say, well, Mr. So-and-so, I know that when you had this bar, these were problems that were going on. I don't know how much, you know, so we're gonna put some restrictions here. Maybe if we have, and I want to oversimplify for the sake of the conversation, but if we have two police runs, you're gonna come back here and explain to us what's going on. Kind of like you do in court. They have what's called a show cause hearing. I think something may be amiss. Let's come in here and talk about it. And maybe nothing. Maybe it can be explained. But that way that they're getting some accountability. And I think the other thing that it does is psychologically, I think it creates a message in the bar owner's mind that the city takes us very seriously. I'm not gonna be able to just come in here and pull whatever I want and just get away with it. So I think that's important. I think the other piece of this is this group would also bring in for a show cause or a hearing, bars at the end of the review period. So every year Diane will do a review of all the bars. Not everything needs to go back in front of this board again. But if there's one that she looks at and says, man, I'm seeing some issues here, before I renew them, I want them to come and go in front of the board and explain why I'm getting these police runs or why these issues are. So I think that that holds these people's feet to the fire. I think that we put restrictions. I think this board can also yank the license. So, and to tell you in my experience of how this has been effective, we had two bars that we worked with in my time dealing with this. And I won't name them, but we were having significant problems at the first bar. There was gunplay involved. We were having all these things. We brought them in, a little different mechanism here, but we pulled them in to pull their occupational license. We spent significant time going back and forth. We went to a mediation and we, so we came up with a game plan for these guys. And they were given restrictions. And what happened was we started seeing a dramatic drop-off of all of the problems that were going on there. The other bar, tons of prob, I mean, every weekend I would see the runs and this place was constantly on there. Our officers were saying, this place is always an issue, always has problems. We tried for the first time doing a hearing for revoke the extended hours. And we got into the hearing and we probably did about a full day worth of trial with these guys. And we ended up working out an agreement, came up with some terms. We didn't have to pull their license. And this bar, and it's, they're still open and we have, they gone from every week, tons of runs to you almost never see their name again because what we did was effective. So I think this same thing needs to be here. If we're consistent and we're strong, I think that we'll create accountability and I think we'll have safe places. So, you know, there's several things to look at here as well. Having places that are open late is not necessarily a bad thing. Having people out on the street, that the more people that are outside, the more people that are eyes are looking at things, the less likely it is that you're gonna have some of these other problems that go along. I'm sure all of you have liked this, but frequently I've walked down Mama Street at night and sometimes you walk down there at night and there's nobody on the whole block anywhere and every light's out in every building. So I think that when you have vibrancy going on and people coming in and out, there's a safety issue there. I think that we can, that there's a, there's a benefit to it. I would say too, that one of the things that we're looking at is, I think that there's a misnomer that just because the bar is open late that there's issues there. We certainly have plenty of bars that don't have issues. And this isn't just upscale bars, because that's something I've heard too well. If we just had more upscale bars, like, we've got blue collar bars that exist in the city that have 2:30 licenses that do not have significant police interaction. So I don't think that necessarily that just because you're open late, maybe, you know, we have second shift people. We have other people that just are night owls and so forth, or who just like to stay out late. I don't know that it's for us to necessarily decide if what they're doing is doing the right things and they're following the rules. So I would ask that we have that conversation. I think this creates a fairness issue for the bars in the business district. I think it also gives us some opportunity to perhaps grow some other opportunities. We've had, we've had breweries, we've had other people kind of call and kick the tires around locations. I don't know whether that's a reason why that they did or did not, or didn't locate here or not. But I think that's certainly a situation that we could end up having a business that we really like to have here, but maybe they won't locate without the extra time. I've had bar owners tell me in the past, under City Manager Fromie, we had sent out a letter to all the bars and proposed eliminating 2:30 licenses altogether across the board. We had significant amount of pushback from bar owners on that. And several of them came and said, this is really where I make my living at, is between this extra hour and a half. And I couldn't make it if I didn't have that. Now, whether that's true or not, I don't know. I didn't look at their books to verify. But those are comments that I've heard. You probably hear similar comments out in the public. I'm happy to take any questions about that. And I also want to point out, as Paul said, when we're doing this, this isn't just John Hayden and Brian coming up with this. We've put together a team here that deal with alcohol and have spent their career. So even people like Kim Colson and Bob Bramble, who aren't dealing with alcohol as part of their job duties today, but because their career is centered on that, we had those, them in those conversations and did a lot of healthy back and forth to come up with what makes sense. So just to give you an idea of where this has come from.
So Mr. Hayden, can you speak to?
Hold on, let me ask him the question first, because I want to get to one of the things that you mentioned early on. In Kentucky, the license by law ends at midnight.
Correct.
We created 1:00 AM as the new norm?
It's been 1:00 AM, correct.
And then 2:30 is the privilege license?
That's correct.
Okay. So I just want to draw that contrast so everybody's aware of the differences. I mean, there is not an absolute right for a 2:30 license.
There is not. And as some of you are probably aware, that at one time in the city, we had like a 5:00 AM law. I mean, and cities are allowed to do that. I'm not advocating for that. But they, that ability, the state doesn't care essentially what we do as long as it's uniform for everybody. So one of the things that City Manager Fromie had wanted to do years ago, and we cannot do this, is stagger it and say, well, you know, a license for 2:00 is this, 2:30 is this, 3:00 is this. That it's not like that. The state says it's one cost for one license regardless.
Thank you for that clarification. Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, so, so Mr. Hayden, we have these other boards and their processes for people to appeal. What would that look like in this instance? Does this go to, is this like code where it goes to Circuit Court or how does it work?
It would. So how we'd get it is, they would, it would, let's say that at the initial, so the initial stage, they would come in cold and they would be, the first stop would be this board. If they got denied, that could go to Circuit Court in appeal fashion. In the revocation situation, as we've talked about this, I think what makes the most sense is Ms. Ramey would recommend, if there was a bar, and then, and she, so she may say, in let's say an extreme case, tons of problems, I don't want to renew them. I'm gonna recommend non-renewal. In that situation, Ms. Ramey would send the letter out to the bar and say, we've determined, you know, the ABC office that we're not gonna renew. You've got a right to appeal to the after-hours board. And so then they could go and take that up on appeal and explain to that board. Obviously, all of the appeals go to Circuit Court. The other thing I'll clarify, I want to bring up too, I missed in my presentation, is the other benefit to this board is it takes out the politics. And we can pretend that there's not politics in these things, but when you think about around the city of Newport and how many of you guys and us know people that own bars around the city and that we may have varying degrees of relationships with. If it comes down to, we're gonna take Joe Smith's after-hours license and he says, this is my livelihood, it's gonna be very difficult. There's gonna be pressure, whether it's real or perceived, on a staff member to make decisions about this. And I think that, you know, hopefully by having a professional, the police department, having a bar owner on there and having a different group, you're gonna have some balance here. That it's not, it's one guy's decision. Somebody's business hangs in the balance for that. So I think that's important.
Yeah, so if we have, and I got a couple of questions and comments on this. You know, when we look at the business owner, and I do like the makeup of the board. I think it's a great idea. And I'm gonna play the, you know, look at this piece of legislation over the long haul that you give a business owner that may not want someone to have a license because it might impact their clientele. Would they have to accuse themselves in that instance?
Certainly would.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, we would, we would have to put together some guidelines there because. because there would be some situations that you could be an issue.
Right, and then, so I do think that when we look at the hotels that are coming in on Mama Street, and when we look at, you got folks that are coming in from out of town to travel and and beyond just a second shift aspect, which is a real thing. Again, you know, I mean, worked in inside the, on the service industry, you're not drinking in the job, you might want to have one after you're done working. You could, you know, most places have a shift meal or shift drink, but chances are you might want to go somewhere else on your way home. But then we also look at people that are traveling and they're on the road, they come to a hotel, they've been tried, you know, on the road driving all day, or they've been flying, and they want to, you know, have one or two before they go to bed or whatever. There, there have been instances, and I used to travel a lot for work, you know, especially if you had time zone thing, and you you might just be trying to kill some time so that you can go to sleep. That having that option is, I think, critical. When we look at attracting businesses to Mama Street, you know, to your, you know, out of your point earlier about about walking down Mama Street late at night and you're not seeing a lot of, a lot of lights on, that's the norm. Unfortunately, that's the norm, and and I'm not saying that we got to go the other way and it's got to be like, you know, a different city or a different neighborhood. But the reality of it is, is that when we expand our footprint and hospitality by having more hotels, that we got to be pragmatic about ensuring that people want to come back to these hotels when they're on their business trips and that they have places to go. And hopefully, they're not coming back for just that reason. Hopefully, they're they're going to come back with their families on vacations and they're going to discover the other amenities that we have in our city and they're going to want to enjoy those those amenities as well. So I think that this is a good pragmatic approach. I like that we're doing this in the CBD, I think that's a good way to start this out with and we can always see how things go. Now, we do have extended hours in some of other residential neighborhoods. And we have had mixed involvement with them over the years. But there are some that, there are some establishments that don't even use it anymore. I mean, the pandemic really changed quite a bit in the way that 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 people go out. And then you have the younger generation where they don't really drink anymore or they just didn't get into it because of the pandemic and they just never got into that whole aspect of socialization. They've, you know, found, found other ways to keep themselves occupied. So in light of the fact that we want to attract businesses, especially in a unstable economy, that we got to be pragmatic in making sure that our hotels are set up for success and making sure that our businesses have the proper guidelines and the rules for them to be successful, which you just talked about earlier. And hopefully, we'll have a package here that we can vote on here soon. I think this is a very well thought out. Thank you, sir.
Just, yeah, we talked the other day about what you were proposing for the for the board. And I think initially, I had thought perhaps it could be something that would rest with staff. But I think your discussion about how this would actually create that board of some professionals, as well as, I think, citizen representation for the other two members?
Correct.
Is that, I think that levels it out quite a bit and makes it more objective. And with a strong process, I really can support that. I I think that a strong process with a strong board could be something that would really help. I I'm not quite sure how how the members would be appointed. Have you thought about how the members would be appointed to the board? And what would be the terms that they would have, or?
I I have not gotten that far into the weeds with it.
Would it be a rather, I hope it would be a rather robust review and appointment process.
Yeah, we would, we would have to do interviews on that and and probably some background stuff. So I mean, it would, it would be, it's going to be more than, let's say, somebody is going to be on the tree board or something. There would have to be a little bit more confidence in in those abilities. And it it's going to be a challenge, as the entire board is aware. It's it's difficult to get people to want to do this, just for any board. I mean, not just for this particular issue, but it's it's difficult to get people to take time out of their day to to spend two hours. I, in fact, I tried to recruit a citizen board member the other day and like, I don't just want to spend the time doing that.
Well, that's what I just want to make comment to. I appreciate all of our citizens and serve on those boards, no matter what board it is. They get immersed with education and learning and it's a big commitment and I thank them all.
It is, it's it's a significant undertaking for a, for a lot of these individuals. And it's, it's, you know, we we pay them a little bit for the meeting, but it's essentially volunteer work by the time that they they sit through these meetings. And and sometimes they're on, you know, they they get some complaints. I mean, not often, but it's it's not easy all the time.
Anyone else on the board?
Yeah.
Ken?
Yeah, my mind is open, let me just say that first. But you're going to hear a lot of questions to this thing because we, it was a real decision made. Additional two thirty licenses were not appropriate. So I, I will need a list of what two thirty licenses are out there, where they are, and a run list, Paul, possibly, chief. You know, about where they're going to and how many times they're going annually or something like that. And I think that's important as we move ahead here. The expectations of this board, John, are they to act as the ABC administrator or only in the two thirty issue?
They would just be extended hours only.
Just be extended hours only, and the extended hours would be limited to?
On to two thirty.
Okay, but what what area of the city?
CBD, so that's primarily Mama Street. I think there's parts of York that's in CBD, but I think York up to like Sixth Street. York Sixth to the river to Sixth Street, I think is CBD.
Okay.
Further out, CBF.
Okay, the, and I, I struggle with this too. I'd like a little bit of, and possibly Diane, Bobby Bramall, Mike Whitehead, and even I could sit in on it. The old ABC people that have done this work before, I don't think it would be a bad idea to have them sit around the table and talk this through. I'm not calling you old Diane, I'm sorry. You know, but Bobby's done it for a while, Mike Whitehead did it for a while, and I did it for a couple of years. So I think it would be good to sit down and and talk it through a little bit on how, and I'd like to hear that back, you know. So I think, I think that would be good. What exactly do you think is the benefit to the city, the the bottom line benefit?
I think it's, I think there's a couple of things here. I think one is, is to create a little bit of vibrancy. I think the other, and I think Commissioner Ed Wansky sort of hit on this, is we're going to put two hotels on Mama Street and in very short order. And and there's going to be another hotel a little further down towards Central. And really, for that late night patron, we're just sending, there's only going one place they can go, just send them to the levee. And I think that that's always been a criticism that we've gotten over time that the city favors Newport on the levee versus the Mama Street. I don't ever agree with that, but I think that there is a fairness issue there.
Could we, could we restrict, restrict them to the hotels, John? I mean, in the motels rather than proliferation? And here's where I'm going to go with this too. For a long time, and I remember when we sat around the table during a retreat process and we said, we wanted more residents in Taylor's Landing. That's what we wanted. And what did we get? We got Mama Throw, what's that, a hundred plus units? We got the Academy on Fourth, which we supported with IRBs. We got Tony Christian's, who did, the Islandman Buildings with seventeen units in there. Mark's Cromer, that Neighborhood Foundation pushed through and helped with this get done. So we've built a residency here, a vibrant residency. So I'm leading to something else that I'd like to see, is I'd like to see what people want. This is a neighborhood, this is where we've encouraged people to live. Do they, who live there, whether they're tenants or owners, do they want this? Is that what they want? I don't think we've come together yet as a board, and we've talked about this during the press retreat, on what Mama Street is. You know, I have one vision, maybe Mike Redwansky has another, Julie has another, Tommy in there, and all have different ideas of what it should be. And maybe we need that as well. And I think that that will be influenced by what that survey looks like, what people want. And that's business owners, property owners, residents along that, in that central business district area. I think, I think this is a slow process, that's my last comment. I think that this is a process that's going to take some time to go through. And I would caution us to move slowly on this before we get too far ahead over our, over our skis on this. So, and those are the things that I need to make a good decision on this, and that's it. Thanks, Tom.
So I've been reading a book recently, I think probably a lot of you guys have read it, it's called Razzle Dazzle. And it's about the history of Newport and the the bars and casinos. And a lot of time has been spent in chambers, not necessarily these chambers, but the city's chambers discussing and debating alcohol law in this city. And so it's sort of, sort of interesting we're having this conversation tonight. And this isn't nineteen sixties or nineteen seventies or nineteen eighties Newport, this is twenty twenty-five Newport. And we we have some, we have some older establishments that have been around for a really long time that that have these licenses. But we don't have a lot of newer mom and pop style bars and restaurants. We don't have a whole bunch of those. Most of, most of our newer bars and restaurants are on the levee.
James.
And they're, they're franchises. Every once in a while, we'll, we'll have a place that will open up that, that that's a, you know, single owner type situation. And I personally, my vision for for our main street is to bring it into the twenty-first century and to have a vibrant area for our residents, not only our residents, but also our tourists, Commissioner Redwansky's point, for us to to be able to enjoy our main street. One of the things they mentioned in the book Razzle Dazzle is that the reporters are going back and forth and they say, you know, Newport's never going to clean up all the casinos because if they do, it's going to be a ghost town. And when I walk down Mama Street at, you know, twelve thirty on a Saturday night, that's sort of what it is. It's it's very quiet. And that, that, not necessarily a bad thing, but to the city manager's point, if you're by yourself and you don't know where you're going and you're a tourist and you're like, this is a main street, it's completely quiet, it's dark, that that can be kind of a scary thing. So I don't think it's necessarily a bad thing to to explore this. I I like, I think it's very creative to create a board like this. As long as we can make it legal, I think it's a good idea. I live across the street from a two thirty AM licensed bar. And a lot of folks go there, a lot of service industry people who work at a different bar or a different restaurant will go to this bar in particular after work for a drink. And it's very respectful. I've lived there for ten years and I've never once seen the police there, I've never seen, once seen a fight there. And believe me, they're directly across the street. So I think that there are good actors out there. I think that that's the, I think the exception to the rule are bad actors. And when we have bad actors, there's a mechanism in the law for that. And I've I've been to the Kentucky Alcohol Beverage Control Commission for appeal hearings and I've seen them revoke licenses before. And I've sat through those hearings. Luckily, I've never had to represent a bar like that, but it does happen. And if we have bad actors, then we need to, we need to strictly enforce that stuff. So, you know, with regard to both this issue and the issue related to bar license, bartender licenses, I think that we need to up update our, our laws are sort of antiquated in a way. And I think that if we can craft our laws to, and our ordinances to be advantageous to new businesses coming to our area, there are, I've talked to a lot of younger and people in my generation who want to start bars. And rather than coming to Newport, they go to Covington, they go to Bellevue, they go to Dayton. Because those places are, it's it's cheaper, quite frankly. It's just cheaper to go there and and start a bar because you don't have an alcohol tax, which we imposed a few years, this board imposed a few years ago. We have this bartender license fee and then this additional restriction on two thirty AM. It it's also, you know, not fair to places like, like Blaze, who is a few blocks outside of the levee. If someone's at Blaze, Blaze has no choice, they have to close. And the customers, if they want to keep going, they go, they have no choice but to go to the levee. So I certainly see that as a fundamental unfairness. But overall, I think it's a good idea to at least explore it and and let Mr. Hayden go down and look into this board and make sure that we can, we can make it legal and make a good board, create a new board.
I do want to add two, two, two things here, and and thanks, Aaron. I think your comments were very spot on. And I, and I mean this, Ken, in the most respectful way I possibly can say these next two points. Bringing prior staff that was involved in a different era of Newport to weigh in on a piece of legislation, and they can come to any, we'll have two readings on this. I think it's a mistake, okay? It also undermines the people we currently have on staff today. It's, it's not a knock on them, but they have bias. And their bias is is frankly dated, okay? The other component that I don't agree with is at the end of the day, we're here because people elect us to serve in these roles. We can, by by us sending out a survey, and sure, we can do that. With the utmost respect, it's a cop out. Thank you.
All right, anyone in the public? We we've gone through board, is there anyone in the public that has anything to say? Welcome.
I'm back. Dallas Secret, Lake's Lounge, Mama, April.
Don't have to do that.
Couple of things, I would just simply like to make a couple of points, you guys, that you want for this, for this whole thing. And I do want to thank the one AM license, that was a plus. Even when I came out here, that was a kudos that I will give to Newport for helping business out. That being said, August of two thousand and twenty, rule was passed, no two thirty licenses could be anywhere else except for the levee. Again, showing support and favoritism for whatever is by the river. There was a lot of reasons I've been told around and I wasn't at the meetings, so I'm not going to, you know, propose that. But the thing is, you were grandfathered in if you already had a two thirty license. This was just for the people that wanted to add a two thirty license, you couldn't get it. So just imagine, well, and it was simply, we, we had problems in the neighborhoods, we had issues with with calls and all this other things. We take the biggest people that had problems, the biggest bars that had problems, they were allowed to keep their licenses. So just imagine that if you lived on Mama, for example, in a place that was right across from my cuddles or next to the strip club or Jersey's, and you see, you passed a legislation to control everything and all of a sudden, I still got people throwing up, I got people taking a whiz out on the, on the sidewalk, we got fights, we got all this stuff. But the city never did anything to change that. The only thing that they did is we could people that wanted to open up something better and well and said, you can't do that because we're spending our time dealing with this other guy over here, but we're not going to do anything to make it stop. So on top of that, I have, and again, can confirm, but I have been told that one of the reasons that they wanted to curb the licenses is because the police only had so much time to handle the calls from these bad actors. Which is some two things. Number one is that any place that opened up at two thirty is going to have bad calls too, because they don't know how to run their place or that they're an establishment that only tracks, I guess, people from prison that want to fight. So and the second thing is that we're going to continue to allow the bad actors to be bad actors so that we can focus our police force in going to the calls at the bad places instead of doing anything to try to change the situation. So we take resources away from people that are trying to grow the community. We basically discourage people from coming in because we tell them, you can't have this because we need to focus all our resources on the bad actors that we refuse to do anything about. So at the end of the day, that rule of two thousand and twenty did absolutely nothing to curb any problems inside of Newport. It did absolutely nothing to get any of the bad actors under control. And the only thing that it did was cause good actors to be punished for the acts of other people. And that's a fairness issue that I think we should be higher than. And on that point, there was a big push, you know, about about two years back. We're going to make sure that we can get everybody out of the bars at one o'clock. Not last call, but everybody has to have, every customer has to have their foot outside of the door at one AM. All right? Now, in my business, we had people would come in, if they smoked a cigar, I'd need an hour to an hour and a half to get through that cigar, right? So usually, you know, they even had ten minutes or whatever, one, it wasn't a big deal. But now we got to have people out at But now we got to have people out after 1 o'clock. When we've been doing that and some people can't finish their, you know, cigars, maybe they got to drink a drink real fast, maybe they got to do whatever. By the way, that, getting them out of the door, that's another thing. That's really bad from a hospitality business standpoint. Because when you say, you can do a last call and then you say, now you got to walk out the door at 1 o'clock, the only thing they're going to do is down their drink, get drunk or faster and get in their car.
That's right.
It's much better to have them wait a couple of minutes, give them 15 or 20 minutes and let them go out there. Their blood alcohol is going to be more stable than it was. You don't want to give them a quick hit and then have it to run back down. And again, you, looking at the effectiveness of what actually is behind these rules. Don't just do a rule and feel good that you're saying rule, but actually look at the effectiveness. Get some people that, that have seen this and go through it. So I started tracking since we hard, hard kicked that 1:00 AM out the door, all the foot, foot, all the feet of the customers out the door at 1 o'clock. On average, myself, so down $60,000 a year, and that is not counting any additional licensing. That's just 1:00 AM license to 1:00 AM license. Because it becomes so punitive that the customers don't even want to try to come in here. They're like, we're not going to do that. We might go there at 11:30 or 12 o'clock, but we got to get kicked out too fast. It's not enough time to stay. Now, here's the thing that I think everybody forgets, who want to get on the business owner or whatever. I mean, yeah, we'll, maybe all right money wise, but it's the people that work there. Ken, you talked earlier about bartenders and the, and the lower wages that they get, you know, just terrible slave labor, something like that, you said.
I don't hear you use the word slave labor.
Oh, I'm sorry. But then I, I'll use the word slave labor. But it's not that bad. Good bartenders do really well, even if they're, they're two. As a side note, nobody's paying that now. It's almost impossible. They raise some minimums and stuff over in Cincinnati. We got to compete. Everything's four to eight dollars an hour for most bartenders now, just from what you said earlier.
What, what is the living wage?
Well, that counts for tips.
What, what do you count as a living wage, though?
Me?
Yeah.
Depends on how many kids you have and stuff. But if you're just saying a general thing, I'd like to see everybody make at least $40,000 a year.
Thank you.
Yeah. And by the way, all my bartenders make more than that, just in, in faith. They can take dollars an hour, by the way, just as feedback. Anyway, all right, but on that note, just that loss of labor that I have sales on there was $12,000 in tips that the bartenders don't get. And I've run two bartenders on the two nights that I would be running, running late hours. So that's taking basically $500 for each of those people out of their check. That's a car payment, you know, that's them moving up to a better house. That's them covering an electric bill with the increases. That's maybe them buying four cartons of eggs, you know. At the end of the day, those things affect people that work here too. It's not just on the business owners, it's not just on the customer. These things, when we generate sales, run the businesses properly, have the people in there, give more working hours, employees make more money. And that's what we are here to do, is to service the community, in my opinion. If we service the community, it's like somebody said way back then, if you help enough people get what they want, you'll never have to worry about what you want, right? So we do that with employees, we do that with customers, and we get a benefit for the sake of the city. We can get businesses growing here, get them on a Newport, operating in 2025, understanding what the new din, new dynamic is, everybody's going to get what they want. And we're going to be a good place. That being said, Fight Nights, if you ever watch UFC, you ever had boxing, I don't know if you know, but those fights do not begin until 12:00 AM or 12:00 AM. They don't even start. That's the early ones. UFC final fight usually starts between 12:30 and 12:45. I have had 50 people that I have had push out of my front door at, at 1 o'clock. And we have a video wall in front of the, the wall there. We've had them out there and they're finishing watching a fight on the other side of the glass doors on the outside patio, because they're not allowed to stand in there after 1 o'clock, even without a drink. I think that's an embarrassment to the city. And I think that if you are forward looking and progressive, there's absolutely no way you could say that's a good look for Newport. It makes us look backwards. It makes us look like we're, you know, from a different timeframe. It's not, it's not who we want to be. It's not the high standards that we were talking about earlier. Kind of the opposite. So the only other thing I would add, two quick things. Hospitality growth has to be a focus for Newport, in my opinion. But if you look at gentrification, revitalization in urban areas, you look what's going on in the successful ones, everything is hospitality driven. Businesses we know it, the business, you know, district, but that, that, that doesn't exist anymore. Everything's done online, everything's done on computer. You know, we have a magic wand and I can push it and I have everything in my house literally tomorrow. Okay, that, that kind of stuff is just not the future, but experiences are, and tourism is. And those spots that we bring in, we absolutely have to be poised to bring an experience, and that brings hospitality. It's going to be food, it's going to be art, it's going to be everything around. But it needs to be ran well, and we need to understand that customers want to go out and not go home at 12 o'clock, 1 o'clock. They just don't. But if we want to light up Monmouth, if we want to eventually light up York, if we want to attract people to these hotels that are coming in, because they do have a choice to go to other hotels in the area.
That's true.
And I have people, I have people that put the residents in, in Oddwood right now because they're cigar smokers. And once they get done with work, they know they can walk to the cigar bar and end their night, and they don't want to have to Uber, and they don't have, want to have to walk or drive drinking alcohol. And they walk back to their hotels and go. They literally plan their trips to Newport because they know they can smoke cigars where we're at right now, which brings in revenue and helps everybody else. That's not just for us. They'll come here for other things, but there has to be other things. And if they're like, hey, I want to go out and get something good to eat, I want to be able to get a good drink, have a good time, I can stay in Covington where the nightlife is great, because they embrace the modern, the modernness of Northern Kentucky years back, decade ago. And they'll say, you know what, I'm just going to go over there, because if I'm over here, what am I doing? So we have to change who we are. I love Newport. I like being here. Don't want to go anywhere. I would like to see us pop a lot more like we're doing in Covington and other areas. And every local resident I have that comes in and talks to me, everyone that I talk on the street, they're all want to see more of it. Their biggest complaint is we don't have enough stuff here like it is in the other areas, and not just here, but like Atlanta, you know? Like in New Orleans, like in other places where these revitalization efforts have done pretty good. But it's about experiences. To do that, you got to bring bars in, you got to bring restaurants in. If you handicap them, you're handicapping the city, because you're not going to be able to be offered what everybody actually wants. And we can send out surveys all day, you know, and, and then only 5% of the population will respond to it. And then we're making decisions based on 5% of the population. Or we can actually talk to people, use our common sense, get out there and know, look at case examples, and this is what actually works. And as a city, the city shouldn't be deciding what you go in on Newport on this building or that building or that building. Leave that to the business people. Because the business owners, their job is to find that demand and need it. If they don't, they go out of business. If they do, then they continue. Things go back and forth, they work together, things get revitalized. But you got to have somebody coming in with a concept that nobody on this board's even thought about. And it's what people want. It's the next thing. You know, we shouldn't be trying to copy stuff that was done years ago, decades ago, you know, almost a century ago. We need to be looking at the focus on where are we going right now? And sometimes you need that outside look, but what you need, they need freedom. You need to give them the freedom so they can actually take the ideas and the opportunities that exist and make it pop and make it work.
Thank you, Dallas.
Discrimination, it's just black discrimination. I mean, when you got the levee can have 2:30, but nobody in Newport can, I need that message pretty clear. We don't like you. We like the levee.
Makes some really good points. Thank you.
So anyway, I appreciate your time. I'm sorry for rambling.
No worries. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to speak on this issue? All right, well, at this point, I think that we've had a good conversation on this. And I think that it's become pretty clear that it's the balance of vibrancy and protecting our residents to grow this thing all together. And I think that the staff has done a, a good job working on this. And I think we need to continue to work on this. And I think there's two different issues that we've dealt with in this, in this comment section, this discussion. One is the bar ID, and I do feel that we need to have a plan on that and move faster on that front. And at the same time, evaluate and continue to work on the idea of this board, how it's appointed. Who are the residents? Do they live in the CBD? You know, fine tune some of those issues and resolve them. And we've been going for a little while, so I would like to take a little break. And we will reconvene at 8:20. Let me first give John, do you want any parting words on this? All right, very good. We'll be back at 8:20. All right, Tiffany, can you call us back in so we can get some work done?
Commissioner Redwansky?
Here.
Vice Mayor Smith Morrow?
Here.
Commissioner Rektin?
Here.
Commissioner Sutherland?
Here.
Mayor Kuduli?
Here. We are at the public hearing portion of the meeting. Commissioners Order Number Thirty-One.
In order of the Board of Commissioners, City of Newport, Kentucky, authorizing Mayor Thomas L. Kuduli Jr. to execute a municipal road and cooperative program agreement with the Commonwealth of Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, Department of Rural and Municipal Aid regarding municipal road aid funds for the fiscal year commencing July one, two thousand and twenty-five as provided for in Kentucky state statutes and accepting all streets referred to therein as being part of the city of Newport.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Brian?
So every year the state sets aside seven point seven percent of the motor fuel tax it collects statewide and puts it back into this municipal road aid fund. This year, the fiscal year twenty-five, the city's allocation of that road aid fund is about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. This goes directly towards making this a street sidewalks and associated items like that. This year, related to this, the city is working on a revised paving plan. For years, we've gone around and do, say manager Hayden and I, we were driving around last year with Ray, we were looking at the streets ourselves. Well, this year, we've employed a more data-driven approach. The iWork program that you've all heard me talk about before, we hired on them to do a service where they drive around every street and every alley in the entire city with a high-resolution camera similar to what a Google Street View vehicle would look like. So residency vehicle with a big canister on its roof, this is kind of a, one of those but on steroids. So what this does is, the service that they do is they map all the streets, they plot into GIS, and they assign a pavement condition rating for each, so that we can actually look at this thing citywide on a GIS map and pick which streets that are in the worst condition. Now, what we'll also do as part of that is we'll cross-reference with the, check with the utility companies, water, sanitation, to make sure that we're not paving streets that'll be torn up in the next few years, and also with any known projects that we have in the pipe. That's, that's all I have.
Great, thanks, Brian. Any comments from the board?
Only that and the, I'm sorry, Ken, go ahead.
Go ahead, you first.
I was just saying that I think it'll be really good in the coming years to have that data set and we can then assess from, from the GIS, being able to look at which roads are, have been deteriorating at a faster clip compared to others. I know we're not there yet, but we have our black belt on it. I think that'll be really helpful.
Ken?
One of the biggest causes of our deteriorating roads are people like the utility companies, as you mentioned earlier. The one that particularly sticks out to me is right in front of, or a little south of Dixie, you know, which was a utility cut that became even worse. They do know that they're responsible for that cut until they do the final repair, right?
That's correct. And this is always a struggle for us when we have these utility cuts. And we do have a pretty all-encompassing ordinance that
Yes.
we did years back.
Yes.
And we do enforce that. It is a struggle. And some of these things, those repairs, and just to use water district as a deploying reference, is they'll package together numerous repairs to have a company come in and do it all at once. So there is some period time when it's temporary repair.
Sure.
So when a final repair is made, we also struggle with contractors and builders and developers as well, but they all have to adhere to that same.
Right. And I appreciate you getting them to come back in and put a steel plate over that. That'd help too. Do we have an ongoing list of when they make a cut, where they've made it, the timeframe they've made it, and when they have to do the, the full street repair?
So we do, and these utility companies do submit street cut repairs. And I'll give Duke is probably the best out of the group in terms of supplying those. We rarely have to actually chase them down. Sanitation is kind of, they mess with some of that stuff, but we do keep a pretty good list of that.
And every year, year over year, this is nothing new. We've always taken the, the total road aid and used it on our own maintenance of the roads. That's a system that we've always done, right?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
And that's only been a portion of the allocation.
Oh, yes. Oh, yeah.
It is, it is.
A small portion.
It's not going as far as it used to, but it is.
Okay, thanks, Brian.
Julie?
So are these municipal road aid funds at thirty, three hundred and thirty thousand? That's almost the same as last year, isn't it?
I believe it's.
It's identical, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So does that mean that we might, as costs of everything are going up, do you think this will be enough to do what we need to do?
That's a compliment by
Supplement.
Commissioner Krimian asks another question.
Okay.
Vice Mayor, that's one of the things that the previous city manager did many years ago, I was on the board, was to dedicate nine percent of the insurance premium to deal with road fund and so, which is obviously necessary because it's very expensive to do these streets and it continues to get more expensive.
And I expect that you voted on that and you'll continue that tradition as it is absolutely required to make the needs actually be able to be achieved. One thing I think just for knowledge base is that when gas prices came down a lot of years ago, the actual fee went down, and then as they went back up, it never went back up. So this is a new baseline number and it's likely to be this way for a while. So we used to get a lot more money than this. Any other questions on the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Smith Morrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Rektin?
Yes.
Commissioner Sutherland?
Yes.
Commissioner Redwansky?
Yes.
Mayor Kuduli?
Yes. Public forum, this is the time to speak on any item that is not on the agenda. Public forum. Welcome. Brandt?
Thank you. Brandt Owens, resident four oh two West Ninth Street. Mayor, Commissioners and City officials, I'm here this evening to officially introduce myself as the newly-elected chairperson of Newport's West Side Citizens Coalition, and I look forward to working with all of you in support of Newport's residents and neighborhoods. And if I may, I'd like to share a few brief announcements. Our April meeting is tomorrow night at seven PM at the Preston on York Street, with the casual social gathering afterwards at Wooden Cask. These meetings are open to the public and we'd love to see everybody there, here, in the virtual audience. The WCC will also be participating in Litter Fest and Trash for Cash this Saturday, April twenty-sixth alongside the Clifted Neighborhood Association, and we can use all the volunteer help that we can get. We're hoping to raise up to a thousand dollars per neighborhood group through our efforts that day of cleaning the streets of Newport. So if you or someone you know is available, please consider lending a hand. We'll be meeting at noon on Saturday at Wooden Cask. The WCC will also be marching in Newport's Memorial Day Parade. We welcome any West Side residents who'd like to walk with us. I think the meeting time is eight AM at the formerly Builder Square parking lot on Memorial Day. And then looking a little bit further ahead, our May meeting will take place the day after Memorial Day, Tuesday, May twenty-seventh. We've extended invitation to city manager Mr. Hayden. Everybody else is welcome as well. That'll start at seven PM. But prior to that meeting, we'll also be hosting a community ice cream social on the lawn of the Preston on York Street, tentatively starting at five thirty. This event is open to all Newport residents and will be a fun way to connect with all of our neighbors. And to that last point, I'd like to publicly thank and acknowledge Commissioner Redwansky for generously offered to sponsor the ice cream and toppings for that event. It is sincerely appreciated. And that is the end of my comments. Thank you all for your time and for allowing me the opportunity to speak this evening. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Brandt.
Hello, everyone. Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, Dan DeMan, Ms. Tiffany, and Lieutenant Krimian, right? All right. So I'm here on behalf of the City of Newport's Parks and Recreation Department, me and the wonderful Ms. Kim Colston. You know, so we got a big challenge ahead of us, but we're excited about the things that we have going on. So it's interesting that we, that we've decided as a city to re-revitalize the Parks and Recreation Department, thanks to the city managers, you know, but we're here to have some fun. So, but I say this is not about me and Kim Colston, this is about the community as a whole. Fighting some of the challenges we have of finding ways to come together. So I want to tell you about some things that we've done so far. I really would like Ms. Kim to be with me, but so far, we've done things like our bingo, we've had Commissioners there, we enjoy Mr. Rektin being there. We've had a pickleball tournament to raise money for bad, but really, it's about the awareness. So one thing we like to do is, we like to present opportunities and let the community decide. So we got T-ball for kids, we're organizing right now, I'm doing it on my phone just now. We got ninety kids signed up for that. So we did the Easter egg hunt Saturday, that was a lot of fun. And things to come, we have a hometown hero ceremony Saturday, April twenty-sixth, and, and Saturday, May tenth. We got the Memorial Day Parade, we got a Juneteenth celebration, which, as we've had, people donated, one person donated five thousand dollars, and thanks to East Row Foundation, they donated, donated another two thousand just for that event. So hopefully we're not a burden to the Newport Foundation. We're finding money of our own to throw, throw events for the community. All right. So we got Newport Blast, Touch a Truck. So we have a variety of things for the community. If you're old, you know, younger, especially kids, we'll have something for you to do. But we, we appreciate the support we've been having, and hopefully we continue to have that support. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Taylor.
Thank Taylor. Thank you, Taylor. Public forum going once, twice. Public forum is now closed. We're going to move to the approval of the minutes, both, or all three. Regular meetings of February twenty-fourth, special meetings of March tenth, caucus and special meetings of April seventh.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or corrections? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Commissioner Rektin?
Yes.
Commissioner Sutherland?
Yes.
Commissioner Redwansky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Smith Morrow?
Yes.
Mayor Kuduli?
Yes. New business, Commissioners Order Number Thirty.
In order of the Board of Commissioners, City of Newport, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the city manager to issue a purchase order for the purchase of one two thousand and twenty-five aluminum twenty-five-hundred gallon water truck.
So moved.
Second.
Welcome, Ray. Tell us about this water truck.
All right. This purchase is to replace our two thousand and one flusher truck that we are still using. It's day-to-day. If you've been down to the river with flooding, that's where it's at. It's been there for a week. So we're taking it day-to-day. The thing is, is they don't make parts for it anymore. It's been rusting out, so with our fine mechanic, Rexonell, we've been holding on. With the, with, with that, we had a big package we put out, and we received one bid from Stringfell, we're rated out of Nashville, Tennessee, for the amount of two hundred and twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars. It's actually, actually cheaper than we thought we was going to get. And we had worked with Stringfell in the past, that's actually where we have our two sweepers from, through the same company. So some examples we use a flusher truck for is, like I said, the riverfront cleanup for floods, perfect timing. And we use it for the festivals that we have at the park down there after them, seafood festival, Italian fest, we always flush the river, clean that up pretty good. We use it for watering new planted trees, we use it for grass that's trying to hold on in the, in the heat of the summertime, landscaping areas. And like I said, we use it on certain streets, but be honest with you, you can empty twenty-five-hundred gallons of water in five minutes. You might get two blocks of streets out of that. So is it cost-effective to use that much that we'll use it on, and here's a little bit of history on it. After water main breaks, as bad as that gets, we used to assist the water department on cleaning that up. But they liked our flusher trucks, so well, they bought their own. So it's only the same one. So with this going through, as long as this old one we have, once it dies, we'll surplus it out. But I'm looking for any questions on that.
Sounds good to me.
I have a question. I remember when we got the other one, and you drove it. Are you still driving it?
Yep.
All right.
I have to remember where I hold the control.
Okay. So you plan on being the dri, you're going to cross-train some, someone else as well, right?
Oh, we got one, you got one.
Okay.
It's a CBL.
Gotcha. Any other comments? Anyone from the public? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Commissioner Sutherland?
Yes.
Commissioner Redwansky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Smith Morrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Rektin?
Yes.
Mayor Kuduli?
Yes. Commissioners Order Number Thirty-Three.
In order of the Board of Commissioners, City of Newport, Kentucky, accepting the bid of and authorizing the city manager, John Hayden, to enter to and execute a contract with TMS Construction Incorporated for the Third Street and Mamma Street Stamp Concrete Pavement Project.
So moved.
Second. City Manager Hayden, or I see John Willis standing up.
I was here to talk about, this is some OKI funding, which we're very excited about as the board is aware that we have to get projects off of, off the sheet and actually done so that we can get more funding from OKI. So this is one of those things, and Mr. Willis, you have some of the details on that.
Thank you, Mr. Hayden. As, as Mr. Hayden said, this is a very important project and our, our goal of getting this OKI funding off the books. By accepting this tonight, we're able to move forward and clear up one of these grants so we can pursue future opportunities. But in addition to that, this project is also the continuation and completion of something that's been in the works for almost a decade. This project's been going on for quite some time and it faced a pause during COVID. And, you know, the hope is that by voting for it tonight, we'll be able to knock this out in the next few months and it'll, like we said, be off the books. So what this consists of is completing the work that has already been started. If you look now, there's, the pavers have been replaced by stamped concrete from Seventh Street up to Eleventh Street, and this will finish the project, going all the way down to Third Street and covering the south side of Third Street from York to Washington. A bid package was put out and we received five bids for the project. And the one that was selected, the most competitive bid, was from TMS Construction at two hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars, six hundred and fifty-two, or two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-two dollars. Not only were they the most competitive bid for the project, but they're also familiar with it as they have done work prior in the portion that are already being completed. And the city has a good working relationship with them. So we're confident they're really to finish the project and that their prior experience will help them get it done efficiently and effectively. You know, I'm looking for any questions I can answer, and I've got people around on the side that can fill gaps where I have not been.
Thank you, John. Anyone on the board?
Repeat that. What will that finish? What space it'll finish?
It'll finish replacing the pavers with stamped concrete from Sixth Street all the way down to Third Street, and then along the south side of Third Street from York to Washington.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just want to do that for everybody's edification because getting that completed is a, is a big deal. Thanks.
I would, I would add, not only do we want it off the books at OKI, but as Ken said, we want it done because it'll really be nice. Right now, we've got some holes and we've got, you know, places you can step off into a crater and things like that. So it, it will really be nice. Thank you for bringing this to us tonight.
Ken, one of the others, I assume you don't know the answer to this, maybe you do. Why are we doing this rather than just standard pavement and using this money for something that may be better or more useful?
So I'll, Brian. So I'm not certain that, what standard pavement means, or do you mean just putting the pavers back?
No, no, I mean like a standard side, we're paving a sidewalk, right? We're putting pavers on a sidewalk, or we're putting stamped concrete on a sidewalk?
We're putting stamped concrete in where the pavers exist now and then repairing any other damaged concrete that's associated with that. So the original pavers that were done twenty-something years ago, you know, the city made a commitment to, to maintaining these things as part of that streetscape, which is why we're here. Those pavers failed because of design that was done back then. And those pavers were set on asphalt base. And when water gets in there in the wintertime and it freezes, there's nowhere for that water to escape. So then you get this freeze and you get this situation what we've experienced now where the tops have popped off of those pavers, creating trip hazards. So this is really an effort to maintain that same aesthetic and appearance that we did back then, but also creating a longer-lasting product that we won't have that same type of issue. So this will just become one with the, a case in Congress.
So at, at one point in the past, the, this board decided that it would be a good idea to have this aesthetic that goes from Eleventh and Monmouth to Washington Avenue on Third Street?
This, this was all along with the streetscape improvements that we did back then with the relocation of the utilities where you don't have these overhead lines, the planting of trees, the, the street lighting, and then the, the paver pattern in sidewalks.
Okay, gotcha. Thanks.
Yeah, you need that photo. You got to see the photo with overhead lights and, and all the trash out front. And I mean, a lot of things changed, and I think that this is, again, the final part of this streetscape. It feels disconnected now. It's going to connect it all the way through the community. It's the last step. Excited to be there.
It sure would be nice if we could get some of these overhead power lines in the ground, in other parts of Newport.
It would. That cost was like thirty million?
For one block.
No, for all of Mamma Street.
Yeah, Mr. We just came through a, what was the cost, John, for one block of that under, that we talked about the other day on underground utilities?
Uh, one block of underground utilities ever on, I think, on the fourth Street would cost over a million dollars.
We got a, we got a deal when we did Mamma Street.
We got to get some grants.
Well, that's how we did it. It was with a grant, and this is with a grant. Again, thank you for the efforts on getting these grants executed. We got to secure them, we got to amplify our old dollars, and look forward to getting it done. Tiffany, please call the roll.
Commissioner Redwansky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Smith Morrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Rektin?
Yes.
Commissioner Sutherland?
Yes.
Mayor Kuduli?
Yes. All right. Commissioners Order Number Thirty-four.
In order of the Board of Commissioners, City of Newport, Kentucky, declaring certain personal property of the city of Newport a surplus personal property and authorize and authorizing disposal in accordance with state law.
So moved. Chief Paluso?
Good evening, I'll be brief. So, in the spirit of grants, the fire department was able to secure a grant to replace our extractor, essentially a commercial washing machine that we use. We have to fire, clean our gear, our sinuses, and house. The nineteen-ninety-six thirty-five-pound gear extractor that we are surplusing tonight is original to the building, and it's obviously washed many years since it's here. Through this grant, through the Kentucky State Fire Commission, we now have a sixty-pound, so we can essentially wash twice as much at the same time. And if we had to pay for it, it would cost us somewhere between eighteen and twenty thousand dollars for the extractor that we have. So far, it's, all in all, kept us under five grand, because you have to pay to install it. And doubling the load size also doubled the water, which led us to a plumbing issue that we weren't aware of. So, that's where the expenses come from, for the most part, it's the line that we're coming from.
Thank you, Chief. Anyone on the board? Anyone on the public? Tiffany, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Smith Morrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Rechtin?
Yes.
Commissioner Sutherland?
Yes.
Commissioner Radwansky?
Yes.
Mayor Caddully?
Yes. We finally made it to department head comments. Lieutenant Colonel Day?
I have nothing, sir.
Chief Paluso?
Nothing.
Lenny?
Nothing.
Dan?
I just want to say that in keeping with the city manager's desires, I appreciate the work concerned with this new legislation, because we have a lot of time to cover it to these matters. Well, I can, I'll say the credit, Lou and the panel, myself, and Don, and Mr. Bramble, because he used to be a senator for the state, and Captain Conkle. We've gone over this kind of ad nauseam in several meetings, and prepared drafts of legislation, vetted it through John and Brian, and we will have something to give to you based upon your comments tonight. So, this has been a long process, and this way we're getting to a point where we can present something.
Thanks, Dan. Thanks for giving that context for all of us and the public. Brian? John Willis? Josh?
City manager.
City Manager Hayden?
You know what, Mayor? You told me earlier, this is gonna be a quick meeting.
Boy, was I wrong.
Real quick, I want to thank Mr. Owens and the WCC for his leadership. I think we had the pleasure of talking a little bit last week, and just a lot of community engagement that's coming out of that group, a lot of really cool stuff. And this is exciting, I think, to have, you know, good partners around the city, and active vibrant neighborhood groups. So, you know, we're very lucky to have his leadership there. I also want to thank our staff. You know, we've had a lot of folks, a lot of changes have happened, as the board is well aware. And I thought what Mr. Garland and Ms. Colston have been able to put together in a short amount of time, the idea that no one was even, you know, we hadn't had a recreational sports, city-sponsored in, you know, at least over ten years, and the fact that, you know, they got a T-ball league up and running, and a ton of participants already. So many events, and not just for kids, but the seniors as well. And, you know, and as Dailen alluded to, they're fundraising at the same time. I mean, so many things Ken brings to me and says, you don't have to worry about money. I've already got somebody gonna pay for that. So, I mean, it's just, I'm really, I'm really impressed that they're self-starters. I've been to several of their events. They're always put on very well, extremely professional. Nothing but good things I've heard back from all of that. And to thank our administrative staff as well. You know, what you've seen tonight with Mr. Willis, and this bidding situation with getting the pavers out and getting this grant off our books. You know, we talked about with Ray and Josh, and within a few minutes, they were in Josh's office, coming up with a plan, figuring it out, getting the bids out, and just waste no time. I think with John Willis, and Josh Tunning, and Bill Richardson, three gentlemen that haven't been here very long at all, it certainly, and Brian and I talk about it all the time, it feels like they've been here forever. They have hit the ground running, have been extremely dedicated, and we're just very proud of the good work that they've been doing. So, I wanted to recognize them tonight. Other than that, Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you, John. On the board, Ken?
Oh, I know I go first. I appreciate the lively discussion this evening, and I sincerely do. You know, maybe I am too old for this anymore, Mike. I have to admit. You know, I, but I do, I do want to make a statement that I think it's important to hear from people that have been here a while. People like Mike Whitehead, and Alex, and myself, who have had the experience of when this strip was full of strip joints. Roger was here earlier, and I didn't see him say anything, you know, who owns the two strip clubs. You know, I want to be very cautious and very decisive. I said early on, my opinion's still open on this, but we put in place a three percent tax on liquor sales, that you alluded to, Aaron, that the purpose of it was to mitigate the costs associated with liquor sales. And by increasing that from that potential more liquor sales, it may increase more revenue for us, but it may increase more problems, too. So, I want to be cautious, and I want us to go slow on it because of that. We do have brand-new businesses, to your point. Baker's Table, Purple Pule, McCullum's, are three restaurants that were opened within the last five or ten years, that honestly are family-owned restaurants, and they're in the central business district. It's not as though development isn't happening, and only by having a two-thirty license, we're gonna have vibrancy. So, I just want us to go slow on that issue, and get the data, and make decisions based on the data as it comes in. That's all I have. Thanks, Tom. Appreciate it.
Aaron?
First of all, yeah, I just want to go back to the Fair Housing Month proclamation. You know, it was, just a generation ago, it was legal to discriminate based on race, color, religion, sex, familial status, national origin, disability for housing. And later, a Supreme Court case said that that extended to privately-owned residents as well. So, that, not that long ago, you could refuse to sell your house to someone. It was illegal to put a deed transfer from one owner to another if they weren't the race that you wanted them to be. And that's unacceptable, and I'm really happy that a generation ago, they passed this law, and in nineteen-sixty-eight, the Supreme Court affirmed that as the law of the land. And I hope that we're past that as a country. So, I'm glad that we did this proclamation today. Thank you, Mayor. Also, I appreciate the discussion tonight. It was pretty spirited. And I certainly appreciate the folks that have been here a long time. This is my first term, as everyone knows. I, this is, I've been here for five months, so I'm still learning. So, thank you guys for your patience on that. Frontline Worker Appreciation Month. Also, thank you for all those that are teachers, first responders, et cetera. You make our lives a better place. Finally, thank you to Parks and Rec for everything that they did this past weekend with the Easter egg hunt. It was a huge success. Commissioner Radwansky and the city manager and I were there, and it seemed like everybody had a great time. Really looking forward to the things that are coming forward with Parks and Rec. Finally, thank you to all the rest of the staff. Keep up the good work.
And Aaron? Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so I'd like to congratulate Mr. Owens, and also offered to the Clifton Neighborhood Association, as well as the East Row Historic Foundation, to do an ice cream social. I just like to make sure that whenever I do something for one neighborhood group, that I get everybody, and that there's an inclusive approach. So, they're still talking about that. We'll see where that goes. I think it's exciting that we're able to complete the stamped concrete project. I know that this will help Vice Mayor Smith Morrow be able to work on more grants for the city via OKI in your position. I certainly do appreciate that. That's a big benefit to being able to do infrastructure projects throughout our city. So, and then lastly, you know, we had a spirited discussion, actually got two things. We do this one thing first before I forget. Shared-use bike lanes. John, I know you weren't here last time, and I nagged Brian about it. Can you give us an update on that?
Sure. We're looking at a plan. We can talk something in staff as to how this works. We need to run that by police department as well, to make sure that we understand what the safety concerns there are. Probably also need to have a conversation with our insurance care, and to make sure that what we're doing is copacetic based on what they want. I don't anticipate any of those things being problems, but I think being, doing your due diligence is important that we do all that. I would imagine that we'll have something that we can share with the group. There may be in about a month from now. So, realistically, I think we should have an update for you then.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate it. And, you know, when we talk about our establishments and our two-thirty license, and what we talked about with bar IDs, in my first term, which was not that long ago, we talked about passing a entertainment district, which we did. Okay? It's still not been activated. That, to me, is something that we have to start moving. We really have to start moving. You know, I saw this event on Facebook about a flea market on Mama Street, and that's fantastic. Says no alcohol. This is in the middle of the day, this is during brunch. We have establishments that are open. There's no reason that we cannot have an EDC activated. There is no reason. So, I do have some concerns as we talk about bar ID. I certainly hope we're not gonna roll something out and not look at the two-thirty license topic first, because we're just gonna restrict our establishments and put in high standards, which is fantastic. I love high standards. But by golly, we gotta be able to finish what we started before we can go and pursue a new legislation. When I think about, when I bought my house in Newport in 2012, and I think about, we've had a lot of increase in business that have come to city. This is very true. A lot of them are small businesses. We recently brought on Mr. Willis to help us expand Mama Street, expand York Street, and really help make Newport a true destination for everybody to enjoy, whether you're a patron at a hotel, or whether you live in the basin or up on the hill. This is going to be huge for us. We cannot live in the past. We can't. I didn't buy a house here for that. I bought a house here because I wanted to live in a community where I could walk to establishments and be able to walk home. I wanted to buy a house in a community where people could interject together, even from different parts of town, or throughout different parts of the country. We cannot continue to let the past hold the progress of this great city moving forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Julie?
Thank you for the proclamations. I had to, a little like Aaron, I guess, thinking about the Fair Housing Proclamation. It's ironic, you know, that it wasn't all that long ago. And it's, you think, well, do we need to proclaim this periodically? And I think we still do, you know, and I appreciate that. And as far as our frontline workers, we need to do that. We don't, I know, I don't always thank them as often as I should, and so, a proclamation makes it official. And that doesn't mean that eliminates the need to do that, and I encourage you all to do that as well. Adding on to the congratulations, Parks and Recs, you guys are moving. That's awesome. Everything you're doing, I can hardly keep up. It's a good thing you put out the updates every couple of weeks to read about that. Our new staff, I thought back, too. Before we had John Willis and Josh, all good names start with Js, don't they? Yeah. And Bill. Bill. William. Well, almost a J, so. But, you know, you guys are rocking and rolling, and that's really awesome. Congratulations to Westside. I've watched you guys grow a lot over the last few years, and your leadership promises to be really good. You guys are more and more involved. This is good for the Westside, and it's really good for Newport, so thank you. And continue to call on other neighborhoods to work together. We love it. So... Good open discussion on the alcohol ID and extended hours. I also want more vibrancy. We moved here for that. I agree with you. We need to activate, get that educate, the entertainment district moving. But I also really respect the work that Legal and Diane and Captain Conkle, the work that you've already done. And I'd like to see that draft. I can be ready to move on that pretty quickly, I think. So, thank you all very much. Really good meeting. Thank you.
This has been a productive meeting, and in some ways, this is a meeting that you're like in the room where it happens. This is where the sausage is made. You gave the whole story about the Blue Ribbon Group that got together. This is publicly being vetted in its first phase. We're not voting on anything tonight. We're gaining more info, more feedback from residents, from the board. Staff's gonna keep working on this, and what a team. I'm just proud of the entire team. All the stories that you shared, John, I'm just really happy with the direction of our staff and how we're working on things generally as a team. What you don't see are the meetings that we have as board members as well. We can't meet as a group, but we do meet one-on-one, and those are intentional to build consensus. Now, there's gonna be plenty of projects that we're not gonna have full consensus on. But we're gonna know where each other's positions are. We're gonna respect each other, and we're gonna understand why people made different decisions. So, sometimes I think that that's a part of the entire process, and I'm glad that you got tonight to spend through that process. As we're talking about the proclamations, in many ways, they serve as a reminder so that you're thoughtful, and you think about these things. We read two here tonight. I didn't read the Arbor Day. But Arbor Day talks about how important trees are to our community, why it was established. And the good news is, not only did we give the presentation and the proclamation, we're getting a check. So, we may have lost a million-dollar grant, but last month, we voted and secured a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars as a part of the development. We got a check for over two-hundred-thousand dollars for trees. So, we're gonna continue greening the community, and individual donations are still accepted. But know that we're on our way to continue to strengthen our community, green our trees, remind people of things that have happened in the past, and how we have to move forward from that, and continue to do work, good work, as a board and as a community. But that'll take a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Rechtin?
Yes.
Commissioner Sutherland?
Yes.
Commissioner Radwansky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor-